I think we're maybe having some sound. Testing, testing. Can anyone hear me on Zoom?
Yep.
Okay, I think, I think we're ready to start now. Are you, you're good?
We're good.
I think, yeah, I think. Commissioner Milich, can you hear us on Zoom? All right, I think we're ready to go.
So if we're ready to go, I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Monterey to order Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. Give me an advance, I'm rusty. I think we need to roll call. Jennifer?
Present. Oh, that's my job. Okay, Chair Freeman and Vice Chair Reed have both confirmed that they will be absent today. After that, we have Commissioner Brassfield, who seems also to be absent. Next, we have Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
At Zoom.
And Commissioner, oh, that was our last of it. We have four total today, which is a quorum for this commission. With staff members present, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole, Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt, myself, Recording Secretary Jennifer Cleary. And I will take this minute to announce to the public how they may be able to join. We do encourage members of the public to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you will find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864, toll-free. Once again, that call-in number is 833-568-8864, and it is toll-free. If the first number does not work, please try another. There are more listed on the agenda posted at isearchmonterey.org. You will also need the webinar ID for this meeting, which is 161-990-8039. Once again, this webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of this screen. To provide comments by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three-minute time limit for this meeting. Please stay within that minute. I do see two attendees. Just a reminder, this first round would be for public comments per items, not on the agenda. And I do not see any hands raised. So I think we can move on, and if that changes, I can let you know.
Okay, so we'll go on to consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes, April 26th. Can I get a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes of April 26th, 2022.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so. All right, call for the vote.
I can do a roll call here. Just a reminder, Chair Freeman, Vice Chair Reed, and Commissioner Brassfield are each absent. For the rest of us, we have Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
All right, those minutes are approved by a vote of four.
Jennifer, just a kind of interesting question I have. Since there's only four of us, which represents a quorum, does that mean that if anything's going to get approved, we have to vote for?
You have to have a majority vote of 3-1 to pass this evening.
Okay. Okay, so. Let's see, public hearings. Wait, yeah, we're ready to go to item number three. Just consider 685 Cannery Row, a use permit application UP 22-0026. Whatever I was just, disappeared.
Sorry, I'll go ahead and announce that. Subject is Consider 685 Cannery Row Use Permit Application UP 22-0026 for a bar type 40 beer ABC license and live entertainment dancing use. Applicant is Christina Riddock. The owner is the Cannery Row Company Limited Partnership. The project site is located in the Cannery Row zoning district with the commercial general plan designation. The project is exempt from CEQA per Article 19, Section 15, 301, Class 1. And with that, your Associate Planner Chris Schmidt will present the staff report.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Again, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the city, and I've been working with the applicants on this project. So just to begin, the recommendation from staff is to approve, adopt a resolution approving the use permit with conditions of approval. Just some back, basic background information. So here we see the site. It's, it's in the Cannery Row District, and it is a commercial, commercial zoned district. And it's a, it's a pretty large three-story building, and then the applicant is proposing this new use on the top floor, which was formerly the Bluefin Bar and Billiards Business, which has since closed. So here's the, the project description for the use permit approval is that they're proposing a, a bar and live entertainment and dancing use. The, the live entertainment and dancing would really be for private events in their event space. And they would be using a type 40 ABC license, which allows them to serve just beer. So no cocktails or shots or spirits or anything like that. This is in conjunction with a permitted commercial and rec, commercial recreation and entertainment use permitted, meaning that it does not require use permit. And what they're proposing, and they've not opened yet, but it would be a family entertainment center, which would include an arcade, escape rooms, virtual realities area, as I mentioned, private event space and a lounge. The hours are limited to 10:00 PM in the evening, and they have some variation throughout the day. There would be anywhere from two to eight staff members, depending on the day and, and the time of the year. And they have included a surveillance system as part of their proposal that would cover the entire building, entire space rather. So here's the floor plan. So as I mentioned, the event space on the left, that would, that would typically be closed during normal operations and only open during a private event. There's a lounge seating area that has a fairly beautiful view of the bay and the rest of Cannery Row. In yellow, you see the arcade areas. Red is the virtual reality arena area. And then the, they are also proposing three escape rooms. These business owners actually operate multiple escape rooms in the city of Monterey currently. And in purple would be the bar and prize redemption area with the kitchen and bathrooms at the rear there. The staff has included a number of conditions of approval. First thing that their employees receive the ABC lead licensee education on alcohol and drugs training prior to selling alcoholic beverages. The applicants have also proposed that their staff would do a, a, a separate training that they've found as well, that their hours would be limited to their proposed hours and would require reopening the use permit to change them. That the planning commission would conduct a 12-month review, 12 months after the, the approval, and which is a standard, a typically a standard condition for any sort of alcohol license approvals. And that violation of these conditions could result in reopening and/or revocation of the use permit. So in order to approve the project, the planning commission has to make three findings. The first is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter, the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zone. As I've mentioned, this, these uses are permitted by use permit. They've included provisions for security, limited hours, and staff's conditions of approval. Staff was able to make this finding. The next is that the proposed use and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained will be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, and will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. So the project is consistent with the commercial land use designation. It is a commercial use. Cannery Row is a visitor-serving area, and this is really what their, their use would provide, that type of service. The, as I mentioned, the, the hours are limited, which would really mitigate any sort of late-night crowd-related impacts. And staff's conditions would also limit any sort of detrimental effect to the surrounding area. So staff was able to make this finding. And then the third finding is that the proposed use would comply with any specific condition. And so I've mentioned the special conditions of approval, and we also have standard standard conditions, such as they'll, they'll receive the appropriate building permits, sign permits, et cetera. So with that, staff is recommending to approve the project. I am available for questions, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris?
Yeah. I have a question.
Yes, Stephen, go ahead.
Chris, you mentioned, you mentioned a kitchen. What type of facility and what do they plan on serving from the kitchen?
So it's by understanding at this time that they are not going to be serving food outside of, that you, if you look at the floor plan, there are vending machines. I know that they had mentioned that sometime in the future that they would possibly serve food, but not at this time.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question. Did the, was the building department set, you know, have they reviewed any of this yet?
Yes, they have reviewed it. They, the applicants, do you have a building permit under review currently as well?
Okay, okay. I was, I was just wondering about the, the floor plan doesn't show an elevator. And they might, they might want to just go double-check with the building official about elevators.
There is an existing elevator.
Oh, there is? Okay. I didn't see it on the plan. Okay.
Yeah, I can show that if you, if you'd like.
No, that's okay. I, I, I trust that. Then on the, the draft revolution, resolution, it, it indicates that a vote has already happened, but that's obviously just a, a, you know, clerical error. So, but obviously, whatever the vote results, the, the draft resolution I saw indicated that there's, you know, certain people had voted for and against it.
Oh, that's odd. Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, it was just sort of a leftover from another thing. So obviously, that's not part of this motion.
Thank you. That is an error. That's strange. I used a template, so.
That would be easy to fix.
Yes, that's easy to fix. And then finally, the findings, number one, it talks about this chapter. And what it does, you know, I don't mean to nitpick, but is this chapter clear to everybody what that means? If you look at finding number one, can you put that on the screen?
Yeah. I don't know if I have the specific language in the PowerPoint. I could.
It was up there just a second ago.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's right, I do.
Is it in the?
Yeah, so, no, go back.
Sorry, I have to share with everybody.
So.
The proposed use, oh, there it went.
So I just want to say the actual resolution says the proposed project is consistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinances and the purposes of the zone. The bar and live entertainment dancing uses are permitted in the CR zone by conditional use permit. So that's more specific in the actual.
Oh, okay, okay. I just found the language, this chapter, to be kind of, you know, not very specific.
Yeah, so I'll clarify this chapter. The chapter is the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so it's, it's referred to elsewhere specifically.
Yeah, so the, the, the finding in the resolution does specifically call out the zoning ordinance.
Great, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, Chris, I have a question for you.
Yes.
On the type 40 beer license, how many types of licenses are there? Is this the? But how do I, the most simple one?
There, there are, I don't know how many there are. There are quite a few. The ones that are most commonly, that, that the city is common, commonly exposed to are 41, which is more for a restaurant that serves beer and wine, and 47 that is a restaurant that serves beer, wine, and spirits as well. So this, this is generally the more
Okay.
considered less intense because they only serve beer.
So matching up the training requirements with this license is pretty straightforward in terms of how we can.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the training, the training is specifically focused on how to identify customers who might have been over-served or have come in, you know, under the influence. And so it's, it's how to handle that customer and how to, you know, make sure that they can, you can get them out the door safely, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions for Chris?
No.
Okay, it's the applicant here in one of the presentations.
You have to push the green button.
Hello, Commissioners and city staff. My name is Barry Riddock. I'm one of the co-owners of what will be Oscar's Playground. For those of you that are familiar with the old Cannery Building, Oscar Hossenfelder's the Edgewater Packing Company. We are doing a little nod to that property since it's right across the way from us. So we thought we'd play with that a little bit. As Chris stated, we do own three different escape room properties in town already. So this was a, a natural extension for a family entertainment center that we envisioned. It's funny to look on screen and see a live entertainment and dancing component. The, the people that might be dancing could be us. It's not really the main focus, but it will be family entertainment is, is the main focus. The arcade and the escape rooms will be the main driver. The lounge area is really just a landing space for families while they plan their next part of their visit in the city of Monterey. Maybe spending a few more hours on Cannery Row before they head off to Alvarado for dinner or some other part of the town. So if you look on screen, the next slide there, Chris, these are just some live shots of what's going on right now. Coming in the door, the staircase, you can actually see where we've had our artists or muralists working on a continuation of the wall that was there to actually grab the 7-Eleven building. So there's a photo opportunity of the building there itself. And we're just in the midst of trying to get the space cleaned. It's been closed for many years. We're just trying to get things like plumbing going, things cleaned up. Paint is, is the main issue. We have put a little wall up there to block the view of some of the, the stuff that's happening at top. It's just a minor little welcome space. It says, this must be the place. So we're looking forward. And then the last space there, you see in the top right, is that's the event space that we see. So that we put new floors in that area and cleaned it up with paint. So you'll see that that's going to be where we anticipate corporate events. We do a lot of team-building work right now. And birthday parties, also big. So just a space to leverage for customers when they want to be there a little bit longer and hit the next one. The focus for what we anticipate really is for fun. It's for families. It's for events. It's for team-building. We don't see ourselves going much beyond that. So when we talk about the limited hours, this is not a bar. It's not a drinking establishment. It is a place for families. We want them to be able to quality with each other there. Is there a question? Just random noise.
I think that was background.
I'll take random Zoom noise. So the idea really is that it's a, it's a place for people, once they finish with the aquarium, they finish with the eating situation, they can, they can land for a little bit longer. I'll have some fun with the kids before they head out for the rest of their events. And just to give you a sense of what we do right now, the last slide that we have up there. This is from our existing properties right now. So these are some of the spaces that we build. There's, top left is a nuclear submarine that you can escape from. The top right is Alice in Wonderland. Maybe one of the rooms that you might run into in that game. The bottom, from a bank robbery game that we have called Rob a Bank, actually built where a real vault existed in the 599 Lighthouse Building. And the bottom right is one of our new games too. It's called The Gate. So it's a little facility that looks modern and Egyptian tombs, and it's a whole lot of fun. So that's, we have experience in the escape room space. We've been doing this for almost five years now, and we're looking forward to opening the new space. We look forward to your. And I'm willing to answer any questions if you have others that were more detailed.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
It, it, it mentioned something about a, a prize, a prize.
Redemption.
Redemption.
Right.
Are you, is that the, the idea with the escape room is to have a prize or, or just to escape?
I'm sure that people, yes, that, that's probably a, that's a legit, that's a logical build. No. The prize redemption is going to be tied to the arcade side. So probably when, when we all went to arcades, it was quarters on the screen. You would get your game lined up and you'd play. That was it. Now you can earn tickets or coupons or points. And they can, the players can redeem those on a card. There's a card system attached to the games now instead of quarters. And as they win, there's coins put back onto the card. They can come and redeem those prizes. So think stuffed animals, stickers, candy. There's just knick-knack items that were, as parents, we'd look going, oh, my gosh, are we really spending time here trying to win that stuffed animal? And the kids would go, yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
So yes, that, that'll be the prize redemption area. That's, so we're going to keep that behind the counter to, to keep the enticement.
Great.
Any other questions, Mary?
We've come a long way from pinball.
Don't rule it out. We're still looking at pinball machines. You would be amazed at how expensive they are these days. It is, they're, they're making a huge comeback. How much, we saw some of them were $25,000 for one machine. It's in business. So there's games that cost more than cars that I've bought. At all, but we're doing it.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience, in the chambers wanting to speak?
There's no one else in the chambers?
I do not currently see any hands raised, but I'll give a quick reminder in case anyone does want to raise your hand.
Okay.
To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864. That's a toll-free number. Once again, it is 833-568-8864. This meeting's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is 161-990-8039. If you are already in the meeting, there is a raise your hand function at the bottom of the screen. To provide comments by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, then *6 to unmute when called upon. I do not see any hands raised, so I do not think there is anyone wanting to provide public comment for this meeting.
Okay, so we'll bring you back to Commissioners for deliberation. And if a hand does, basically, come back and pick it up.
Got a hand up?
Oh, Commissioner Dawson has a question. I mean, a comment.
Now, I've done, I've done escape rooms. I've done a pinball machine. I have a pinball machine. If you have a guy who can repair a pinball machine, I'd be. I would say they're tough. But anyway, I think this is a real good fit with, with Cannery Row. And the fact that it's family fun, you know, that, that, that's a big hitter for me. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Stephen?
I'll second that. It seems like a really appropriate use down there, and it's so nice to see this large space being used in such a creative way.
Okay.
I'm, I'm in favor of the Williams Gulfstream Pinball Machine, and I also am in favor of this project.
Great, I am as well. I, certainly not anything from a land use standpoint, more in what was previously there. Can I have a motion for approval?
I'll move with the findings contained in the report and also the special conditions contained in this staff report.
Great, thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a discussion. Okay, can we call for the vote, Jennifer?
Definitely. We have Chair Freeman and Vice Chair Reed absent, as well as Commissioner Brassfield. Commissioner Dawson.
That's a yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes, without a till.
All right. This motion passes, and it is appealable to the city council with forms found at the Planning Commission within the next 10 days. Sorry, the Planning Office within the next 10 days.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. Commissioner, comments? Anybody raise their hand?
I, I have a question for staff. So the, I'm the, what is the status of the coastal plan redo? Thanks for coming in. Good luck.
Bullshots.
So we almost have a draft of the land use plan. We've been working internally as well as with reaching out to the Army and the Navy and the Coast Guard and all of the various agencies and revising policies. I hope that early this summer, we're going to have a draft to present to you. I hope that early this summer, we're going to have a draft to present to you. The Coastal Commission does want to see the doc, draft document before we release it. And I'd hoped to get it this month, so we're running just a little bit behind. So, you know, our goal is to have public hearings and meetings on the land use plan portion late summer, early fall in front of the planning commission. It is important to say that there is a second part to our plan that we have not started editing yet, and that's the actual zoning regulations. So there's both a policy section and then the land, the zoning regulations have to be, they have to encompass everything that applies in the coastal zone. So you're not allowed to refer to other sections and other documents like you normally would. So it's incorporating everything into a fairly large zoning chapter that will cover a coastal zone. A lot of it already exists today, but it's just taking it from everywhere else and pulling it together.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any information, reports or staff comments?
I do, just in terms of planning office update. At the last city council meeting, last two, the the city council's been considering the draft changes to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And last Tuesday, they passed the second reading of your recommended changes as written. And so those will go, become law within 30 days that we could implement. I think it was interesting that the council spent some time talking about buffer zones between R1 districts and the R3 properties where they may allow or where our code does allow ADUs to exceed 16 feet up to 25 feet. But Chris did an excellent job and had a GIs, on the second meeting, we brought back a GIS analysis. There were only 141 properties that were in that situation. So I think that seemed to alleviate their concerns. So that was an interesting debate. They also passed their last Tuesday, the first reading of the rental. And they spent a lot of time to allow class one and class two bikes. So that'll come up for a second reading next Tuesday. And they were still thinking about it. They wanted additional information, but they tentatively passed the first reading last Tuesday. I should just take a moment too, to talk about the advanced planning work that we are currently doing. So you can have an idea of what's coming. We expect a cannabis ordinance. Probably will, first of all, there will probably be a tax measure in front of the city council here and then early summer for the November ballot, they'll be considering that. At the same time, we're in the process of drafting the regulatory and land use regulations that'll ultimately come to the planning commission for recommendation to city council. So that's on the top of our work program. We're working, one planner, the top of the work program is the local coastal plan. The other piece that we're working on is Fernando Rivera is working on our specific plans. There's a new law that went into effect that if cities have not met their regional housing needs requirement, that projects that include more than two housing units can apply for an expedited review, much like a checklist review. They have to fill out a special application. I don't, and so we're working on transforming our guidelines into objective design standards for applications that would go forward for what's called an SB 35 application. It's a specific section of law.
So did anything happen about what we requested from, from the, from the state, I guess, is what happens when we don't have the water and they insist we build houses?
So we haven't had any. We've spoken at the State Water Resources Control Board meeting requesting the item to be agendized. The city council sent letters to the Water District, State Water Resources Control Board, Monterey One Water and Ambig. I think we're going to get a response from at least one of those agencies. So we will, the council is continuing to pursue this question of water availability to meet their, to meet the city's housing objectives.
As long as they're not soon, you're tapping your foot hoping we'll do it.
No, it's really been handled so far at the council level. So after Fernando finishes the SB 35 guidelines, she's going to be working on our SB nine. And SB nine is the new regulation with two units and a split of a lot. We did have our first applicant potentially interested in an SB nine application come in. It's been relatively quiet since that became law January 1st. For other cities in California, it has not been quiet at all. But I think the water situation has really dampened that, that opportunity in our community. But our to bring those.
Was that a pun, Ken?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Millich, I missed.
Good pun.
Oh.
Dampened the issue?
Yeah, I'm learning from you. Yeah.
Fun, go to prison.
That's right.
We're still working on the Laguna Grande Regional Park Plan Maintenance Plan, and we're working on the environmental document right now with an outside consultant. So we're doing that more directly with our city council. So there's a lot of projects going forward in the advanced planning realm. So I think you'll start to see those hit your docket probably this summer and early fall.
I have a question about the, this afternoon's meeting. So what was going on? There was a special council meeting that must have been just Zoom only?
Yes, so they had, the city council had a special meeting that they had published an agenda for yesterday. So we found out about it yesterday. And so they were going into closed session to discuss some litigation issues. And in advance of every closed session, they have to have an open session to accept public comment on the agenda, on the agenda item. And so one of the intricacies we have by going to hybrid meetings is I think we only can, and Jennifer will know better than I, but like, we're trying to show not only on Zoom, but at YouTube at the same time. And I think we have to, we can't quite use the same space at the exact same moment for open meetings. So they opened and closed the public meeting for public comment at the council level. And that's why we were about eight minutes late starting. And we usually, as you know, don't have a conflict with our meetings, but this was a special city council meeting regarding litigation.
One day, I've noticed. And the so is the city council Zoom only?
No, they're doing exactly what you're doing. So there are regular city council meetings. We usually have, well, it depends because, you know, their meetings go to 11 o'clock at night. So it's sort of, we have an afternoon and evening session. We may have usually three people in the afternoon. Sometimes in the evening, we may have only one.
Right.
As people go home and, and work remotely from there. So.
But the closed, the closed council meeting was actually Zoom only?
So yeah, the closed session.
Okay.
But so it's a new day. We're hats off to Jennifer and our AMP representatives with Mario and just trying to keep us up with the new technology and keeping things moving.
This sort of echo chamber thing keeps haunting us, but it's better than it used to be.
Yeah.
I think we're figuring it out a little bit sooner. It's usually somebody's laptop has the microphone or speaker on in the room. So we have to make sure those are off at the same time, not to create interference with the city's system.
It wasn't me, man. You can't prove a thing.
Probably me. I don't know. So that's all I have. We probably will not have a meeting on the 24th. We don't have any items which which will be great so I can work on wireless.
Yeah, cool.
Well, it sounds like you're very busy. Okay, looks like we're at the end of our and I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Adios, muchachos.
Adios.
Thanks, Dan.
Bye now.
Thanks for coming, everyone.